For Monday July fifteenth, I ask that we all stand to put up our allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us prepare ourselves in whatever way you see fit. Most Gracious, Heavenly Father, no become used to say thank you, Father God, we thank you for all the many blessings that you give us. Lord, we might have differences of opinions on many things, but we thank you for the fact that uh that bullets did fly this over this weekend. And and it was able to uh have our 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 past president uh saved, oh Father God. So I just want to say thank you for that. But we also know that there was a life that was lost, oh Lord, and we ask that you continue to uplift their family and keep them, oh Father God. Lord, when we start this meeting, we ask that we do things decent and in order, and this council continues to move the city of North Chicago forward. This is our prayer in your daughter and son Jesus' name for his sake.
Amen.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Right.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present by Zoom.
Okay, at this time I'd like to make a can we get a motion to allow Alderman January to come into the Zoom?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
Second.
Second by Alderman Jackson, uh to allow Alderman January to come in to the Zoom. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Motion carried. Also, I'll let the record show that uh Alderman Smith was out, uh he is out on vacation, so he will not be part of the meeting today. Uh with that uh OmniBus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockham. I make a motion that we approve the OmniBus vote agenda from five dash one to five dash four as presented, second.
Remove Alderman uh Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the OmniBus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Um public comment, are there any public comments?
Edith Lopez.
Evening.
Good evening.
Let me preface by saying I have practiced this a number of times and I get a little bit emotional, so I apologize. Um also that the thing I'm going to discuss involves my son, who you can clearly see is perfectly fine, so if I don't word it correctly, I I hope that that's the final thing that you get from that. Uh my name is Edith Lopez Trejo, and I have been a resident of North Chicago for over eighteen years. Uh my kids grew up in the school district. My two oldest boys, Sebastian and Jose, are college graduates, and the youngest Abby is a rising sophomore in college. Um aside from a few negative instances that we've experienced, overall, it has been a normal life for us here. Of course, our town has its problems, what town doesn't? I feel as though we always hear about the negative things uh about our town, and yes, occasionally, a tidbit of good news will sneak in, but I think those are too few and far in between. On that note, I wanted to publicly and personally thank the two paramedics, Juan Lopez. So sorry. Juan Lopez and David Lu, that I had the chance to meet when they came to my home.
You go, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. When they came to my home on the morning of Jen- of June twentieth, without going into too many details, uh my middle son, Jose, who's back there, um recently had a minor surgery that required me to change the gauze twice a day. It had been going pretty normal up until that morning. As I removed the old gauze. To replace new gauze, uh the wound started to bleed. At first, it wasn't gushing, uh but within a few minutes, it filled the cavity, overflowed onto his back, um overtook his whole back, it went onto my bed, all of his clothes, it was a lot. I used all the gauze that I had in my room, uh because right now it looks basically like a little nurse's station. Um and I was attempting to detain the flow myself. Um after having no luck reaching the surgeon's emergency number, about ten minutes had passed, and I finally decided I needed more help. I placed the call to nine one one. If memory serves me correctly, the last time I had to call an ambulance to my home was for the same kid when he was five for an unrelated medical issue. He's twenty-two now. The paramedics arrived pretty quickly, and I was definitely in a state of panic. These two guys acted quickly and calmly. They agreed that I had done the right thing in calling. After attempting to curb the tide themselves, they packed him as best as they could and whisked him off to the hospital. I don't remember how long they were actually in my home. It felt like forever because of the situation, but I wanted to thank them for bringing calm and professionalism to a situation I was not handling well. It was because they told me that he was doing okay. I was able to drive safely to the hospital. I was shaking, and I drove a bit faster than I probably should have. Uh but I kept thinking that they didn't look panicked, and that eased my mind a bit. Thank you for coming quickly. Thank you for talking with him the whole time, and thank you for taking care of him. Having already taken the ASVAC, my son is in the process of joining the military, and this medical procedure was to address a recurring issue. I don't know what I thought at the time, and even at the hospital, the situation was a bit serious, but luckily and thankfully, he arrived quickly and didn't need a transfusion. I know some will say you were just doing your job, and that may be true, but there is a difference in just doing your job and bringing compassion, calm, and professionalism to a situation that could have been chaotic. At least it was for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just say, uh I don't know what I would have did in that situation, but you know, uh you know, uh they got everything worked out. Uh that that is a positive. Uh I know our our fire chief here, uh Chief Umeck is here. I know he will pass it on to the gentleman, you know, our firefighters and paramedics that was on scene. But you know, I I I'll just say, you know, it's it is always good to hear those positives that come out. Uh our guys do a a job every day. Uh it doesn't matter, you know, where they're going, you know, there there, as they said, there are always the ones that's running in when everybody else is running out. Uh and they they perform their job to the best of their ability. Like I say, it's always good to hear when, you know, uh residents does come up and and give that little bit of support to let them know that all that they're doing is is, you know, it is something that they do uh positively. So thank you so much, and again, glad to see you're okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dante Brooks.
Hello, everybody. Uh just want to bring along some more, I guess, good stuff. Um I spent Sunday afternoon at our beach that was revamped, and then it was a great time. There's a lot of families out there. We spent a long time out there with our friends. We had a tent, everything, music playing. And it made me look around, and I said, man, this is beautiful, because North Chicago has a beach. Right? And so I just want to give kudos to the city, to Foss Park, for taking that time and putting that initiative to restore in our beach, and I think we got an award for that, too.
From Foss Park.
From Foss Park, and I think that's amazing, and this is something looking forward, because being from North Chicago, born and raised, like a lot of us, knowing where North Chicago was, where it went and where it could go back to again, that was just something that I saw with my own eyes, like this is where North Chicago could be again. And it was a great thing to say. I just wanted to give props and kudos to the city for doing that. I think that was awesome, and anybody who's watching this on Zoom or whatever, we have a beach. We have a park. We don't have to go anywhere else if we don't want to. We're trying to have things here in our city that we can do without having to go other places. And I hope that keeps growing amongst the school districts, football teams, and stuff like that to where we can keep it here and grow here. So that's all I want to say. That was it was it was a great experience yesterday.
Yeah. And and again, that's, you know, Foss Park and and our treasurer Vance Wyatt, who sits on that board, uh you know, has always been pushing to make sure that our parks and beaches are, you know, held to a a standard that everyone can enjoy, so. Uh again, thank you from uh for Foss Park for all that they do and making our community a better place, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Great job, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Um as being as being part of um as being a commissioner and part of that project, um I would like to say that um Dante, there was some more positive that's coming out of that. Uh we have the Foss Park president over here, and the city is continuing to work with the Park District on even future projects, so that's something that's positive that's coming down the pipeline. And once again, thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for all of your hard work that you do at the Park District. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, as we clean up some spills here, we move on. Uh regular agenda. Uh seven dash one, consideration and approval, resolution appointing Chief of Staff Greg Gregory Jackson as primary member of the uh police and police chief Lazaro Perez as alternate number member of the LakeCom board.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve a resolution appointing Chief of Staff Gregory Jackson as primary member and Police Chief Lazaro Perez as alternate members of the LakeCom board as presented.
Mr. Mayor, point of question.
Uh there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by uh Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Jackson, that seven dash one be passed as presented. Alderman Coleman.
Um is there any way we can divide that vote up? So we can have uh two separate votes, so we don't have to vote uh together, in case you approve one, but you don't approve the other.
No, I think it comes as one, one appointment. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh Alderman Coleman and uh members of the council, this is housekeeping, that's all this is. The intergovernmental agreement was approved on the at the uh June fifteenth meeting for both LakeCom and uh the ETSB. This is just the housekeeping based on the agreements the council already approved. So it's the the IGA requires that two people be reported to the LakeCom board, and the IGA uh or the second IGA also calls for the establishment of the JETSB of Lake County, but the council's already approved that we're just doing this as housekeeping because uh Lake County asked, rather than just have the IGAs, which are acceptable, that we cover them with re- uh resolutions.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
I'd like to address the attorney. Um how would my vote go if I agree to one and don't agree to the other? Do I vote yes, or do I vote no?
Well, turn.
Does that make sense? It's it's voting on as one, so I guess if you wouldn't agree, you'd probably want to vote no. But it's up to you how to vote.
Okay, I do.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman January.
She's on mute, sir.
You're on mute.
Aye. Can you hear me?
Here. Aye.
One for aye, two for no. We'll give it a second here, see what you get.
Can you chat your response? While you are in the process of who says aye?
Aye, okay.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
I recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, motion carried. Uh seven dash two, consideration and approval of resolution, uh ETSB of Lake County.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve a resolution, ETSB of Lake County as presented, second.
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman uh Allen, that seven dash two be passed as presented. Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye. Can you hear me?
Still no sound. Yes. Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh seven dash three, consideration and approval, library uh board appointment of Etta Robinson from June uh third, twenty twenty-fourth until May twenty twenty-seven.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve the library board reappointment of Etta Robinson, June third, twenty twenty-four until May twenty twenty-seven as presented, second.
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Jackson, that uh seven dash three be passed as presented. Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
You hear me now? Hello? Hi.
Try it one more time.
Hi. This is ridiculous.
She says aye. Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven dash four, consideration and approval, library board appointment of Giovanni Verden uh June third, twenty twenty-fourth until May twenty twenty-seven.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve the library board reappointment of Giovanni Verden, June third, twenty twenty-four until May twenty twenty-seven as presented, second.
Been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash four be passed as presented. Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Yes. Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven dash five, consideration and approval of library appointment of Peter uh Villanueva uh June third, twenty twenty-four until May twenty twenty-seven.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
Like to approve library board reappointment of Peter Villanueva, June third, twenty twenty-four to May twenty twenty-seven as presented, second.
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash five be passed as presented. Are there questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
No.
Alderman Ja- uh
Jan.
January. Peter Villanueva. Seven five. Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh seven dash six, consideration and approval of amending uh Title Eight, Chapter Thirteen, Section Eight A dash twen- uh twenty, or reducing the maximum number of class GP license from thirty to twenty-nine, and amending Title Eight, Chapter Thirteen, Section Eight dash A dash fifteen, increasing the maximum number of Class A special uh license from nine to ten.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve of amending Title Eight, Chapter Thirteen, Section Eight A twenty, reducing the maximum number of class GP license from thirty to twenty-nine, and amending Title Eight, Chapter Thirteen, Section Eight A fifteen, increasing maximum number of Class A special license from nine to ten, second.
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash six be passed as presented. Are there questions?
Question.
Alderman.
For for this, I know that we've um we haven't given the license to to the individual yet, but when that comes up, there's only one license that's left, right?
As to the Class A special.
For Class A, because the license is for a restaurant to have to serve food. Is that that that's what we was concerned about last time?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. This is the one, okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Excuse me, Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January. Try. No. Can you try? Can you speak it? I think we may have fixed the issue.
No.
Okay, we got you good, hold on.
Okay, that's a little too loud.
Yes, we're back in business.
Where's my skin? Okay.
All right, motion.
Alderman Jackson.
Motion carried. Uh city bills?
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Allen.
I make a motion that we consider approving the city bills for special bill run for two million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, forty dollars and eight cents when funds come available, second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the city bills be paid as presented. Uh you know, Alderman January, even if you didn't have a speaker, I was gonna let you speak. So uh any questions?
Me.
Alderman January.
Thank you. Um is uh our controller available?
She's at the microphone now.
Oh, there she is. Hi, Twanda.
Hi, Alderman January, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
I'm okay, too.
Good. Um are there sufficient funds in the account to pay for to cover the bill run, and when will the checks be cut and sent?
Okay, there are sufficient funds in the account to cover the bill run. The checks will be cut tomorrow and mailed out on Wednesday.
Okay, and then what is the amount in the water fund that is um liquid?
The amount that's liquid in the water fund is seven million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents, and that's as of July eleventh.
That was thir- Friday?
Thursday. Thursday.
Thursday, okay. And then Vance, is what's the um
The non-liquid, the non-liquid is one million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-six cents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Before I vote, I'd like to make a statement. Because I have reason to suspect that one or more of the bills included in the special bill run, which are aldermanic expense reimbursements, are a misappropriation of funds, my vote is no. And I'd like the record to reflect my statement as well as my vote. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Chuck almost got a chance to vote. Motion carried. It's all right.
It's all right.
Uh miscellaneous business, anything on the miscellaneous?
Yes.
Alderman.
On July twenty-seventh, I'm having a uh I'm having a prayer, picture and prayer again, because it was so successful last month that we we're gonna do it again July twenty-seventh at one thirty. We're gonna do it in front of City Hall. So if you guys want to come out, express yourself, pray, testify, say what you want to say, come on out and enjoy yourselves, because this is a time and opportunity for our city to come together. I'm inviting all the pastors here in North Chicago, um everyone that's within North Chicago, everyone that's within the Lake County area. Come on out and enjoy yourselves, because like I said, we just had one last month, and it was very successful, so we want to do it again, and we want to, we're gonna bring the community together. We don't want to divide the community. We want to bring this community together, and it we're gonna have some struggles, but it's okay. That's why we're gonna do this, because those struggles, we're gonna let them fade away. So come out July twenty-seventh at one thirty at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else?
Man, I got one.
Alderman.
Uh I absolutely bring this up on uh on Saturday, we have a little we have a little issue down at uh down at the Amelie Park. They was parking on both sides of the street, and we couldn't get a ambulance down through there. We had to. It was that tight. People parked on both sides of the street. So you kind of look at that and see what, you talk to your staff tomorrow and see what we can do about that. The Foss Park district come up, called me, uh well, Bob called me and said accident down there. They were leasing some blooms down there for something. And if it had emergency call, they couldn't get through.
That was the one on Argon?
Right on Argon, right down.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, so I want you to know, so you think about it, get back with me, so I can get back with them, what we should try to look at doing something like that.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no one else. Uh this is actually the last city council meeting before we go into our community days. Uh because we have uh five Mondays in July, and uh so we'll be going into uh August second and fourth, through our August second and fourth is community days.
Right.
So uh we just wanted to So, uh, we just wanted to uh, invite everyone out to have a good time. Uh, this is something that is not just put on by the city of North Chicago. But is also by the park district and school district one eighty-seven. We have all collaborated to uh, have an event for the residents of our community. I hope you guys have an opportunity to come out, enjoy yourselves. Uh, Friday, the second, we actually have a movie in the park. Uh, uh, hosted by uh, Fox Park, uh, so the kids can come out and enjoy themselves. Uh, that Saturday, uh, the parade kicks off at ten o'clock. Come out and and uh. It is a beautiful parade. They, we always have a good time as we uh, come through the city of North Chicago. And then the E, then uh, uh, everyone comes out at the uh. Over by Fox Park in the District one eighty-seven field for a good time. Uh, there's uh. Music, entertainment, there's plenty of food. Uh, come out and enjoy yourself. That uh, evening, we have uh, Crazy Howard McGee coming to be our our MC that night. Uh, I got a, hear that we're gonna have a little Battle of the Band again that night, uh, so. Hopefully, everybody comes out and uh, and votes for the city of North Chicago and so we can possibly uh, win. Uh, that evening, we have uh, Sandy Redd, she was a finalist um, on the, on the Voice. She's gonna be our, our headliner uh, from two o'clock to three o'clock, two, from, I think it's one to three. Actually, we are gonna have Latino bands coming out and then to to uh, perform for us. And then Sunday is always our gospel, so uh, come out, have a good time. Uh, Kim McFar- uh, McFarland. Will be our uh, headliner for Sunday. Uh, it is for the city of North Chicago, it's for the residents of the community. And the guests that come in, and oh, by the way, yes, fireworks will be on Saturday night, so. Come out and have a good time and uh, hope everyone uh, uh, can have that opportunity, so. Uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
Question about community days, um, the bouncy houses, did you get that taken care of this year?
Uh, yes, there will be no fees for bouncy house.
All right, thank you.
Yes, indeed, so we make sure that's gonna happen, so. All right, uh, hearing no other, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, executive session, I'm sorry, sorry, yep, yep, we have executive session. Going into executive session, five, ILCS one twenty-two, C twelve establishments of reserves. Or settlement of claims. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Alderman Allen.
Second.
By, second by Alderman Evans, that uh, we go into executive session. Uh, do we need a roll call? Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're going to executives, thank you. Been move off. Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that we reopen our city council meeting. Um, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Uh, since we're not going into uh, any action related, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the city council meeting stand adjourned. Any questions? All in favor? Uh, oppose? Motion carried. Okay. City council stands adjourned.
All right, at this time, we'll call the judiciary committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy, Alderman January.
Present via Zoom.
Okay, at this time, we have one item up for discussion and review. It's a discussion review ordinance approving a moratorium on the issuance of license for video gaming terminals. Pursuant to municipal code Title five, Chapter thirty-three. And class G dash P liquor licenses pursuant to municipal code Title eight, Chapter thirteen. And I believe presentation will be done by Chief of Staff Jacks.
Chairman, uh, Jackson, thank you, members of the council. We discussed this uh, several weeks, weeks back about. Our recommendation is staff to take some time to look at the number of video gaming terminals we have located in the city of North Chicago. As part of adjusting our quality of life, we also talked about liquor licenses and I had uh, pointed out in the last meeting that. We have fifty-four, fifty-three liquor licenses issued in um, in the city of North Chicago. We also have a hundred and ninety-nine terminals. Some of those terminals are in the queue. When you compare us to the second most populated city in the state of Illinois, as reflected in the staff memorandum. I I distributed to council last week. Uh, that city being Aurora, we're higher than them in the total number of terminals. Um, we're recommending to the city council, we would ask to advance this ordinance to the full body. Um, out of committee, Mr. Chairman, to uh, do a one-year moratorium to allow staff to do a. Study as to what we believe are the proper number of terminals to have in the city of North Chicago. I think you'll remember, and it's also reflected in the comp plan, that there was a point made about the number of gaming terminals we also had in the city. It's an opportunity for us to start deciding. What North Chicago wants to be versus what people tell us we should be. And I know that's the desire of the, this mayor and the city council. Um, we're asking for one year, but based on the aggregation of the data, the, the mining of the data. And then the aggregation and the analysis of the data, we may find that that happens sooner. Uh, we certainly don't wanna compromise, compromise any revenue streams to the city if, if we think those revenue streams are stronger than what we would bring into counter gaming. There was also a question raised about commitments that we've already made in regards to gaming. Particularly, particularly the compass project that is gonna happen on forty-one South of Buckley. Uh, this, at, at, we're having those discussions with the uh, city attorney, city attorney Simon. Uh, there has been an added uh, section to the ordinance allowing um, flexibility as it pertains to the forty-one TIF. Not outside the TIF, but just the forty-one TIF. And again, any of those decisions on license issuing, whether there's a moratorium in or not, are with the city council. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we would ask, staff would ask if we're able to advance this to the city council. Uh, for a, a potential adoption.
Uh, any question from council? Yeah. Alderman Coleman. Mr. Chair, um, so what you're saying is you're gonna freeze the number of video for a year? You're gonna, no more video gaming license for one year, you're gonna freeze it?
Yes.
All right, and um, if a situation comes up in which we have to unfreeze it, right? Would we be able to do that as council as well, right?
City council can repeal any ordinance that the city council adopts, yes.
Okay, um, and the last question um, would be, let's say the current number is forty now. Obviously, within a year, you have businesses closing and transferring and things of that nature. Will the number stay at forty or as the number decreases to thirty-eight, then it won't go past thirty-eight or thirty-seven?
That's a great question, Alderman. The hundred and ninety-nine terminals that have been approved by the city council as this moratorium by attrition. We would not replace those terminals, not until the data aggregation and analysis takes place and the council's able to get the data that they uh. Need to make, need to make the decision again, that could be less than a year, but it's our sense that. If we look at this and the council decides, wow, we really have an excessive amount of gaming terminals and we haven't clustered in certain wards or certain areas. Where maybe they shouldn't be. Um, I think having the availability of the attrition and some of those. Uh, terminals that have gone to the wayside right now, uh, I think that would be advantageous to the individual alderman.
So the, basically what you're saying is the terminals now are grandfathered in, the video terminal.
In essence.
Grandfathered in.
In essence, yes.
And you couldn't get a new license, but if you lost your grandfather license, then you couldn't get a new license.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Until the moratorium is lifted, correct, Alderman?
Or we decide as a council, let's say a grocery store comes in and says, I want a liquor store next to the grocery store that needs gaming, you know, and that's part of the deal. Then something like that, we could always vote on, right?
We have discussions on how that affects or amendment to the uh, moratorium ordinance or repeal the moratorium ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
So I'm, I assume the consensus is to go ahead and move it for the full council to vote at the August meeting. Okay, I don't see any objections to that, so we'll go ahead and move it forward for uh, consideration approval. At the August meeting. At this time, uh, no other business before the judiciary committee, uh, I need a motion to adjourn and.
So move, second.
Motion by Alderman Allen, seconded by Alderman Evans to adjourn the judiciary committee meeting. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
At this time, the judiciary committee meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.
Okay, I'd like to open the human resources committee meeting, roll call please.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, we have a two-item agenda. Um, there's the human resources uh, department monthly report first. Um, if there are no specific questions on the monthly report, you've all received it in your packets. And if there are no questions for um, Director Black, then we can move on to the second agenda item. Anything? Okay, uh, second item on the agenda, discussion of insurance renewal presentation for medical, dental, vision and life insurance. By Global Benefits.
Okay, hi, good evening, Alderman. So everyone has, should have in your packet, um, the information, so. It's that time of year, you know, with our um, annual enrollment, uh, sorry, um, yeah, enrollment. For our renewal for our medical, our dental, our vision and our life. Um, the um, initial, you can see from my memo, the initial uh, renewal rate came back at fourteen point five percent. From Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The final um, medical number was. Negotiated down to three point two percent with global um, assistance there. And there's uh, no rate increase for our dental, vision or our life insurance, we're at a rate guarantee. Um, the city already budgeted for a ten thousand dollar increase, anticipating if we did have uh, that. You know, high of an increase for our insurance renewal. So my recommendation is basically to put this on the August fifth agenda. Now, the representatives, um, Kurt Mark from Global Benefits are also here to answer any questions. If you, you know, have specific questions related to the packet and the information there and the process.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. Um, Liz, I would just like to thank you, uh, I know. Um, I had a vision issue in the past and it was on a Saturday. And uh, Mrs. Black, she called one of the gentlemen over there and they took care of what they had to take care of while. Um, I was in much need at the time, so um, I must definitely appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any other questions regarding anything with the medical?
Good night. I just wanna say, uh, great job. Uh, you know, uh, starting at, what is it, fourteen point five and we're, we're thinking it's gonna be ten percent over. And to get it down to three point two increase, I mean, you know, uh, that's hard work. That's hard work and it's uh, showing that our staff is doing everything possible to make sure that uh, the employees that are here. At the city of North Chicago gets good insurance at a low rate, so uh, great job, Liz, we really do appreciate it. And I know it's, uh, you're, you're a staff of two and I know yourself. And, and a lot of us coming right from yourself, so great job and we really do appreciate all that you did to, to make this happen.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and it's also working in partnership with Global, so I just want.
Yes, yes.
Mark and Kurt and all the hard work, you know, to really push back to Blue Cross and Blue Shield and say, you can do better.
Yes, yes.
For the city.
And thank you, thank you guys for doing all that you guys do for you, we appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I also wanna say, Liz, thank you very much, gentleman from Global, thank you very much. I know, I know what the insurance climate is like right now and I know that this is um, remarkable. Yeah, it's what I'll say, it's remarkable and we truly appreciate it, all the employees of the city, we truly appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, if no other questions, then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the human resources committee meeting.
So move, second.
Okay, so moved by, was that Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Moved by Alderman Allen, seconded by Alderman Jackson and roll call please.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Okay, human resources committee meeting is adjourned.
At this time, I'd like to open up the public works committee meeting, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, at this time, we just have uh, monthly reports on the committee, do anyone have any questions on it? No. Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
I would like to say you're doing a great job as being the chairman of Public Works and um. Thank you, uh, Chief of Staff and your public works for dealing um, with the constituent in my ward, with the, with the alleyway. So I most definitely appreciate you for handling that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman.
I have something. I would like to acknowledge one of our employees, uh, Jamir Talbert. He was an intern just a short while ago at the water, he was in public works and he uh, put the nose to the grindstone. And took his test, got his C license for uh, the water treatment plant, very proud of him. Uh, and just less than a year later, he just recently got notified that he got his A license. We're very proud of him and uh, I hear from the gentlemen that are down at the plant now that. He may be the first one to pass it on his first try. Not only did he pass, he did it on his first try. So we're gonna keep working with the other guys and uh, try to get them uh, all certified down there and uh. Of course, we're very, very proud of Jamir and uh, hopefully I can bring good news that all of them have followed suit, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good job. All right.
There you go, there you go. Even better.
That's it, that's it. Okay, at this time, I'll close the public works committee meeting. So move. Move Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Jackson, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Uh.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll call the public safety committee meeting to order, uh, roll call please.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, at this time, we have two items, uh, one, obviously, the monthly reports for both from the discussion.
From the discussion of Police Department Monthly Report and number two, the discussion of the Fire Department Monthly Report. I've, out of all these uh, of these two reports have been submitted to council and packet. Is there any uh thing that anyone needed to say or have addressed? From those two uh departments. Hearing none, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn the uh Public Safety Committee meeting. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Allen and seconded by Alderman uh Evans to uh. Adjourn the Public Safety Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
Motion, uh, meeting adjourned. Sorry about that. I'm looking at the next meeting.
Like to open up the Building slash License Committee meeting. Roll call.
Okay, uh, if you'd let the uh co-chair go ahead, Alderman Evans, Evans, Allen. And uh go ahead and conduct the meeting in my presence on Zoom.
Okay, Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
One, discussion of special event, Matthew Home Family Connecting Block Party, Saturday, July the twentieth, twenty twenty four. At five AM to six PM, the parade route was from Eighteenth Street to Argon Drive. Two, discussion of special events, Fifth Ward Meeting and Block Party held at twenty three hundred. Martin King Drive, Saturday, July twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Opinion Matters. Uh, I think we just, it's not, no, just letting people know what's going on in those two. There's no voting anything on it. Any questions on this? The two events? Okay, can I get a motion to close the Building slash License Committee meeting? Okay, go ahead.
For funding matters, um Taylor, is there anything that you wanted to um clarify or bring up? Uh with an update or anything to the building or um licenses?
We're going to check the Chief of Staff. Taylor's not here.
Oh, Chief of Staff, is there anything?
As far as an update regarding, I'm sorry.
Anything related to our buildings? License?
No, nothing, nothing in that regard. Um I, I. In reference to the comment you made at the last council meeting or the committee meeting about applications for special events. We are working on language, myself, the city clerk, and the city comptroller on language about um. Uh you know, if, if you leave the place a mess, you're gonna be charged by Public Works to clean up the, those uh. Uh components you wanted added to the, to the uh application, so we're working on that, Alderman.
Okay, when do you anticipate for that to be done?
Every day's a new day, Alderman. I wish I could.
Well, I hear you on that one.
I, we'll, we'll do, uh, we'll try for August first, but we'll do no later than August fifteenth.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Any more questions? Okay, could I get a motion to close the Building slash License Committee meeting?
So moved.
Second, move Alderman January, second by Alderman Evans. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
Alright, thank you. The Building License Committee meeting is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Allen.
You're welcome. I would like to open up the Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. I'm sorry. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
In the first one, do anyone have any questions for the monthly report on economic development? So I will go to the second one, adoption of comprehensive, comprehensive plan.
Chairman Evans, members of the committee, members of the council. Uh, the zoning board, Planning and Zoning Commission adopted or recommended. That the comprehensive plan, the final draft, be forwarded to the city council. For discussion and consideration to move to the full body. Uh for adoption. This is an exciting time for the city uh to take their vision. Uh this coupled with uh rebranding and some, some other projects to take this and uh. Move, move it forward as to what we want to shape this city and what we want the city to look like. Much of the comprehensive plan remains the same from the draft that the uh council received. Uh Taylor's in the background. He's out sick, but he's in the background um in case we need to ask him questions. But uh, everybody received a copy. If there are any questions from Lakota group is here to answer any questions. But uh, if not.
Any questions? Alderman Coleman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Anyone with any questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for. I was just curious, um, how you arrived to this comprehensive plan without speaking to. Uh, the leaders and the officials like myself. Um, in which I've reached out to your group on numerous of occasions. To set up an appointment and to discuss this for about a year now. And uh, actually, uh, never got a returned phone call. So I just want to go on record that this comprehensive plan has none of my vision in it. So I'll vote for it. I'm not trying to make a big deal about it. I just want to know that, how you put it together without talking to everybody, right? I don't get it, but that's it. Uh, continue with your presentation.
No, I, I, I'd like to address that um, in the beginning of the process, we did try to set up. They called their interviews with every alderman. I, I think it was part of staff um trying to set those up because we don't have direct contact with aldermen. Um, we did sit down with um almost every face I see right here. Um, unless I'm mistaken, Alderman January, uh maybe we couldn't sit down with you. There was some issue, but I remember sitting down with Alderman Murphy. We all sat down. I don't know if you were reaching out to me personally, or you were trying to check in with staff to reach out to us.
I was reaching out to Mr. Nimrod. Um, now you are aware that there were some business owners. That I had got together on Sheridan Road that had some parking issues. That wanted to deal with the parking and I've got a vision for Sheridan Road. I was very excited to speak to you about Sheridan Road. I had business owners that were set up to speak with you on Sheridan Road. Now, I do know that you spoke to every alderman here, but you did not speak to me.
I know, no.
So for you to sit up here and paint the picture, you know, that you spoke to everyone, is not true. We still have business owners on Sheridan Road that is my community and my constituents. That require me to speak for them and such a big comprehensive plan and so many issues going on downtown Sheridan Road. And for me to get the business owners together to give the ideas and for you guys not to just show up. You don't have to ask me anything. I, and, and if you wanna know the truth, right, and since we're gonna put everything on the floor, right? What I said was, I need you guys to talk to the business owners. Don't worry about talking to me. I'll be there and you guys never showed up. That's why you never talked to me, okay? So, it, it's not a big deal. It is a big deal because I have to speak for those business owners. So I have to go back down there and explain to them why I promised them. That someone from your group was gonna take their concerns into consideration. And you guys never showed up on Sheridan Road, so. Right, I'm done with it. I appreciate your time. I appreciate all the hard work that you put into this project. I'm just going on record that neither me or any other business owners on Sheridan Road. Was able to present in this comprehensive plan. Since then, the Chief of Staff, the Mayor, the Alderman. They went down to Springfield. They're working hard for everybody in the community. They're trying to put a project together on Sheridan Road and I'd like to thank the Mayor and all the aldermen. I wasn't able to attend that Springfield trip. They had an agenda item and they went down there and they took care of business. So thank you to my fellow aldermen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief of Staff. For continuing to put the vision in place despite of Dakota's lack of interest for Sheridan Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go on and talk about my slides, but I do wanna say one last thing. And I don't know where the miscommunication happened about Sheridan Road particularly and the business owners. As I go through the slides, you'll see how much engagement we tried to do throughout the process. And I'm gonna be honest, um. There was so much um of us trying to do more engagement than was even part of the proposal. That I personally was going on Sheridan Road knocking on business owners' stores, trying to talk to them personally. I even sat at the laundromat for three hours trying to just talk to people who are doing their laundry. Because I knew we weren't getting enough business owners. I'm just trying to tell you that Lakota was not trying to like. Not show up at a meeting. I don't know where the miscommunication might have happened. Maybe we weren't exactly told about that meeting. Or we didn't know about it.
You returned comment to Nimrod and you told Nimrod if the business owners wanted to meet, they can come down to City Hall to meet. Now, what I recommended, you just go on with your slide presentation and just keep it moving. But if you wanna continue the conversation, we can keep talking. But you told me that you guys were not going down there and the people at the laundromat, they're not even from the community. I had the business owners, the liquor stores, the tent company, the uh residents from uh the Kukler Towers, the senior citizens. So I'm gonna give you another opportunity, okay? Just go on with your slide presentation. Leave it alone.
That's fine.
Alright, thank you.
That's fine. Alright, well, for um committee members who might have not been in tune for the whole process of the comprehensive plan. Or might have just been in and out of it, we want to give another opportunity with the next slide to try and explain to you all what the comprehensive plan is. Very briefly and very shortly, so if you just hop onto the next slide, we just wanna share. One last time, what this is, this is a vision for the community's future. It does focus on land use framework and at the end of the day, this is a, a guide for public and for private investment. Um it, it does towards the end of the whole comprehensive plan show how we take that future vision. And work with implementation in terms of action steps. How do we have those action steps? And bring that vision in, into life. So it's really all about the community vision, that vision turning into strategies and that's, that, those number of strategies. Turning into action steps. Every community really needs a comprehensive plan, um and so it's very important for us to have that vision be unified. All through all seven wards. So moving on to the next slide.
Alderman January, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just had a question, uh, two things. Um first, a question about your, your first page. Of the slide presentation. Um, is that just a title to be a catch, like a, a grab your attention, or is there a missfalling?
There were two versions of the slides. Um, one was supposed to have city council on it and the other was to be used by Taylor for planning and zoning commission. I believe they used a different version of the slides for this meeting. Is that your comment?
The plan comes for Sevio. From Sevio, is that?
It's Spanish.
Comprencivo.
Or is it just a kind of catch to your attention? For the Spanish speaking population or what?
Yes, this was chosen about two years ago.
Okay, cuz, oh, this plan is not in Spanish. Okay, thank you. Uh and then my last thing is, I do wanna state, early on, I was um involved. And I talked um at the phone with someone from your organization, so. Um, to verify your, your statement you made about myself. Oh, thank you.
Continue, go ahead, continue.
Thank you. Alright, so moving on to. This slide here, so when we talk about a unified vision, um the vision that we put together is very robust. Um, it has a lot in it and with that vision, there's a lot of attributes. Some of those attributes um talk about things that we already have and we wanna hone in on. The fact that we are diverse, the fact that we have some good education that's been improving over the last few years and particularly throughout the comprehensive plan. Um, the fact that we do have some beautiful open spaces, not all of those we do own, but they are within our community boundary. And we do want to focus on those, so some of those attributes do exist and it's a matter of focusing on those. And some of those attributes that we show in this vision are things that we want to do more and better um about. So supporting homeownership, being able to get more businesses in our downtown. Um, being able to focus on local entrepreneurship and um being able to leverage our lakefront, however tiny our sliver of that is. So a lot of that um vision is, is um things that we, we either celebrate or we want to do better about.
When you say the vision of wanting to do downtown, what, what are you guys describing? I, I saw the few things that you have up there, but what is your guys' vision for the downtown area?
For the downtown area, there is also um a little visual that I'll be showing up there. But it, it, for downtown, there's, there's a lot um that needs, that needs to happen. And in, in order to attract and retain existing businesses. One of the main things that we saw in downtown was the fact that there is no actual life to it. It's very hard to be in downtown as a pedestrian. People just zip through with cars. It's very fast. It doesn't feel safe. Yes, there has been some improvements to the urban design with sidewalk improvements. Um, but it still doesn't feel very pedestrian centric and that deters businesses from wanting to open there. And the fact that a lot of the businesses are not food related, there are no restaurants, coffee shops, places to sit down and enjoy. That also doesn't help the second business to open up and kind of continue that chain.
Right, so how do you go about cha, making that change?
First of all, you wanna make it safer for pedestrians. Need to make that street a lot. Less vehicular focused, narrow it down. Your current lanes in downtown are at least fifteen feet wide. And you don't need that width for a car. The most you need could be between twelve and max thirteen. That fifteen feet wide street is allowing a car to feel like this is more than just a local street and it's zipping through. Um, and you don't have any mid-block crossings, so your block is very long. And it's allowing the car to continue its speed acceleration and that's also not making it safe. Um, and also the, when you come into downtown Sheridan, coming north, um when you cross under that bridge. The street narrows down, right, but it takes a while for it to narrow down. There is a white line next to the car. That is really not for anything. It's not parking and it's just there to narrow the street down. That is just extra space for a car to keep accelerating its way down. A lot of that street improvement is in um urban design, physical change that needs to happen. We do show some of that um in a rendering that we ended up doing um for downtown.
So by them, uh doing the, the uh construction on the, on Sheridan Road and they got the street um. Right, so what's next? I mean, when they did that, should they have put the walkway? A different walkway to cross the street or did something different besides just widening the street, not, you know, with your suggestion?
So you're saying what they've done recently, should that, should they have done something different? I think what they, what they did recently was they just beautified your sidewalk. I think what they, what they did recently was they just beautified your sidewalks, right? I don't know that they changed the width or played with how big or narrow your street is, right? They just made it more beautiful. But the issue is that the street width itself is way too wide and it needs to be slimmed down. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but.
I think, I, I think I know where you're going, Alderman. The, when we have this plan, Lakota's developed it based on pulling data together, deciding voices that they heard from, what do you want here, what do you want there? Our responsibility as staff is implementing the plan. Our responsibility as staff with the support of the City Council is to turn around and say, IDOT or Lake County comes through and they say, we're gonna do this with your roads. It's our job to stand there and say, well, wait a minute, you're gonna do that with a road, we're gonna put a sidewalk here.
Right.
A sidewalk here, we're gonna do a traffic light here, we're gonna have traffic studies to tell us, you know, what, what we can and can't do. We, this is our guidebook to tell us when we start putting things out there and implementing and, and what kind of retailer are we gonna use? This is what, where do we need, what, what kind of housing do we want?
Right.
This, this is our guidebook that it's up to us as staff to implement.
And I do understand that, but see, every five years or so, we just had a comprehensive plan. So therefore, that comprehensive plan got changed because we have someone who knew doing another comprehensive plan. So, every time somebody new, it changes. So I'm just trying to figure out, when is it gonna come into effect?
Yeah.
You know, it's nice to have those comprehensive plans, but the thing is, when is they gonna come into effect?
The comprehensive plan that you had previous, and you jump in, the comprehensive we had, the city had previous, was a baseline for this to start working off of. They look at the previous compreh- comprehensive plan. Our plan changes based on community needs, community desires. I mean, that's, that's a big part of it. You know, do we want more restaurants? Do we want a more diversified housing stock? Do we want less, uh, uh, low income housing, which is reflected in the comprehensive plan? It's us, it's up to us to implement those, again, going back to what I, I, I was saying. Is this going to be tweaked again in five to eight years? It should be looked at. It should be looked at to make sure we're still meeting the needs of the community. I think everybody in this room would say, when we look back at what the population and the makeup of businesses were in North Chicago twenty years ago, it's different from ten years ago and it's different from now. And if you stay stagnant and, and don't adjust to that change and make modifications, we'll keep rolling, we'll keep swimming against the current. I'm not sure and I can't speak for my predecessors and I want to be very cautious when, when, when I, when I say what I'm about to say is, I'm not necessarily sure that previous comprehensive plans were effectively implemented. I, I'm, I'm going to say that they were probably done well, they were done well intentioned. There was a sense of how we use this as our tool to, to, to move the city forward. But when I come here ten and a half months ago and I look at North Chicago and where we can be, it really tells me that the foundation that existed before wasn't being built upon. It's the only way I can describe it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll sit down. Um, if you spoke to me, I would have gave you some basic history. That comprehensive plan came about twelve years ago. Dr. Brooks, rest his soul, he came up here and myself, I was campaigning against the Mayor and we kept accusing him of not having the plan. And he went out and he reached out and got a, the AMLE League to give us a, a excellent plan at that time. And that was the first plan that came out since, well, since Betty Thomas, before that was twenty years. But, um, the, the issue that I have is we had enough in that plan to go off of, right? And I think that we paid again for a guy to come up here and tell us that the streets are too big. Chief, if you can come up for a second and address the podium, I will like to let you know that the city does have a vision for downtown. Your Alderman, your leaders, we have a vision for downtown. And that vision, when we all spoke about it, included funding for the project and which I said earlier, your Alderman, he went down to Springfield, right? To acquire funding as well. In the previous, uh, the previous comprehensive plans, there were even ideas in which to create bike paths that would connect, that you could drive through downtown to go to the downtown districts. That street that we're talking about, we don't even own that street. The Chief of, the Chief of Staff, he came up with an excellent idea in which we can create an appearance code for downtown Sheridan Road to make sure that all of the buildings are within your council's appearance. We also spoke about landscaping and beautifying North Chicago with some of the current contractors that we currently have and some of the financing. Some of the, the trees are too big, there's electrical power in trees. These trees are tearing up the pipes. So, we have a vision and we look forward and hopefully our Mayor continues to have a great relationship with ABV. But we, as leaders, we have a vision for downtown. And that's bringing anchors to our community, bringing attractions and bringing businesses to our community, not just gaming licenses. And as you've seen today, that, you know, we're trying to get a control on that, on Sheridan Road. So, we do have a lot that's going in store on Sheridan Road. I just happened to mention the comprehensive plan because I'm excited to see that we're doing this in-house, right? And I don't think that we should lay someone to tell us that our streets are too big, okay? That, or we need, that just doesn't make sense to me. But Chief, the reason why I'm calling you, is there anything that you would like to add in your vision to what you see our downtown looking like?
I, 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 I think the comprehensive plan does do a good job of giving us the blueprint on how to move forward. There's no doubt that when we talk about Sheridan Crossing, which a lot of, the clock is ticking, a lot of good things are happening in the next sixty days, we'll see some things start to come to fruition. I think mixed use development, I think an entertainment venue down there. Cleaning up the appearance of Sheridan Road is certainly important because it is our downtown.
We got some garbage cans ordered.
We're working on garbage cans, we're having discussions about sweepers to make sure we keep things clean on a daily basis, which will come before the council down the line here. I don't think anybody dismisses this, no matter whose ward it is, it's part of the city, it's the, it's the face of the city that downtown. I, I would, I would simply say this and, and there's a lot of good things that are happening on this, on, on this mayor and this council's watch that are gonna bear some significant fruit. I will say this. I've dealt with a number of groups over my many years doing, doing this and I will tell you that I, I was pretty pleased with this comp plan when I sat there and read it. I covered it with, a little bit with Alderman Smith before he went on his trip, he took a hard copy with him to read. The plan is what the professionals, like we're gonna talk about in appearance code, are hired to do. They know how to aggregate that data, look at it, apply it to urban planning. We need the council to accept the comprehensive plan and say, let's move this forward, this is the tool, this is our map. And then, when somebody asks, why are we doing this on Sheridan Road, it's in the comp plan. Why are you looking to do mixed use development on Green Bay? It's in the comp plan. These are all things we planned for and envisioned. Why are you looking to diversify housing? Because we heard it from our residents, it's in the comp plan. This is our guidebook.
Why are we cutting down alcohol and gaming parks?
Because it's in our comp plan. And, and, and I, I guess the best, we need to, as a city, and I, and I tell staff this on a regular basis when, when, in, in a variety of different scenarios, we gotta stop shooting from the hip. We saw, we saw turnover in the Economic Development Department and that broke up part of what Lakota was able to do. There was a loss of contact and continuity and communication that happened because we lost Nimrod, we lost Ferrera. And, and they were searching for the resources and how do we keep this project going forward? And quite honestly, they may tell you, I was the biggest pain in, over there because I was trying, let's get this thing done. We need to move to the next steps, we need to, we need to get further down the road. I, I will tell you, if you're asking me as your Chief of Staff, I'm pleased with the product. I think it's gonna take us places. I think it's gonna take us where you want to go, Alderman Coleman, where you, Alderman Evans and Alderman Allen. I think everyone in the Alderman in here, Alderman January, away on Zoom, Alderman Smith, if he'd ever, if he was here, but he's not. But, this is what we need. And, and I'm asking the council to let us have this tool in our toolbox so we can take your marching orders, because they're yours, and carry them out.
And, and for clarity, Chief of Staff, I absolutely believe that we need a vision, absolutely a hundred percent will vote for it. I wish I could have had these discussions with him before the council floor, but I'm pretty sure next time that they'll call me and they'll get my input. So I think that's done. So, thank you very much, Chief of Staff, for giving out your vision.
Okay, go ahead. Could I say one other thing as before I let? You know, as we continue to move forward in this comp plan, like I said, it's, this is kind of our roadmap. So if someone comes and says, hey, I wanna put a store over here, he says, it doesn't fit. You need to put your store over in another area because this is an area of what we're utilizing for a different type of business.
Right.
But we need to make sure that we, as a council, continue to watch and study this comp plan. We, we, you know, where the housing is gonna go, so we don't turn around and says, well, we're gonna put, you know, a, a different type of housing instead of a larger, you know, group of houses.
That's right.
I mean, these, go ahead, finish your.
But, the, the, the comp plan is very important, but we do got to stay on it because, like I said, I've been sitting up here and we're always switching. So I think it's really gonna be enforced, because right now, we do have a different Chief of Staff in place. We do have someone that's really gonna make this our guide. So, you go ahead and let us know what's going on so that we can figure out.
Not just your Chief of Staff, your entire planning staff has changed, which is great.
That's it.
So when we talk about unified, unified vision, we're able to do that because we're not starting from scratch. You, your community is really built on unique strengths and a lot of it is because of strong partnerships that the Mayor and a lot of you sitting on those chairs have been able to sustain over the years. Rosen Franklin, a lot of others, Naval Station, Green Belt, but also a sense of community. So, we wanted to focus a lot on building more partnerships throughout this comprehensive plan and we wanted to focus on collaboration, so that's the next slide. We did as much engagement as we could, so it was really a journey of collaboration. Exactly a year ago, we were at Community Days, both days, we held community open houses. We went to the Soccer League, so if we switch to the next slide, it really gives you a summary of all the engagement that we tried to do in the next slide. Whether in scope or out of scope, steering committee meetings, stakeholder interviews, community workshops, Community Days, as I said, we even created informative, informative videos walking through all the assessments that we did, all of which were bilingual and English and Spanish. We sent mailers to every single household in North Chicago, three thousand eight hundred fifty-six of them, had a project website and a project brand, had online workshops, tried to do as much as we can, but we started the project knowing that engagement is gonna be tough and we saw it, but it was okay, we got as much as we can. So that yielded a comprehensive plan, which is the whole point of today's discussion. I'll keep it short, few more minutes. The whole plan is structured in a three-tiered program. We have six main themes. Those themes have a number of goals underneath them, think of them as your aspirations, where you're headed, and then the strategies. How do you get there? Yes, I have a goal in mind, but I need action steps to take me there. So, that's the one thing that really sets this plan apart from the plan before it, yes.
Sorry, Assistant Chief. Yes, sorry.
I don't mean to interrupt, I was just advised at the City Council meeting in Waukegan was kind of accosted by a mob and currently their Aldermen are kind of trapped inside the building. So, it sounds like it's an anti-Palestine protest. So, there's no indication they're coming here, but we are in a Kansas, Kansas City Council meeting with something similar. So, just gonna take some precautions outside the building here, just want to let everybody know what's going on, so I apologize to interrupt.
That's quite all right. Thank you for letting us know.
And I'm, I can't talk to the other Alderman and motion to maybe postpone the rest of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got stuff to do.
We're good. We got officers here.
Okay, so the one thing that sets this plan apart from the one that you had in twenty sixteen that was done by CMAP is that this plan actually has action strategies. It tells you how to get to your own vision. Previous map just kind of showed you overall what were the issues and somewhat what are the goals, but it doesn't really tell you what to do, how to get to the nitty gritty, step by step, what to do, how do you do them in terms of timeline in chronological order, this plan does. But moving on, this shows you for on the next slide, the six themes, next slide, sorry. The six themes that we have and then the following slide shows you a sample of how it's structured. You have your theme at the top, your aspiration, one point one, that's a goal. And then one point one point one is your strategy, expand homeownership programs and incentives, that's big for the city. And then the little italicized action steps, one through four, are the detailed action steps of how to get there. And then to the right, homeownership programs, that's sitting inside of like a blue box. That's, that's pretty much a case study from Washington State. So we tried to color the comp plan, not just with imagery, but with case studies from communities all over, showing you samples of how other communities have done this before and trying to give you real concrete samples and examples. So, after that, it's not, this, this is the one thing I was hoping Paulman would look at. But yes, there's landscaping, yes, it's not just narrowing the white street, but it's coffee shops, it's looking at the buildings, making sure that the facades are improved, making sure that the trees are better selected, the landscaping is looked at more closely, that it is ADA accessible, that we maintain the parking even if we narrow down the street. It's all about making it pedestrian friendly and beautifying it through murals, landscaping and other urban design features. The one thing that we actually have never done in any other comp plan, and this is the first time that we implement this in any comp plan ever, is this new concept that we call cross thematic implementation. So as I mentioned before, we have six themes, but for the first time ever, we're trying to create something called pairings. So how do we look at strategies holistically? So, from several themes, looking at strategies that make sense together, if you put them in one bag and then giving that bag or pairing a name and a description. So we're calling this pairings or cross thematic implementation. It's a new concept that we've honestly never seen written about or discussed in other comp plans. And because this is something new that we're kind of exploring, we decided to submit this plan to APA Illinois Award for Daniel Burnham Award, which is the elitist of all awards that a comprehensive plan can be submitted for. And last year, this award was awarded to the comp plan of Chicago. So, fingers crossed, but we're hoping to win. That's pretty much it.
Any questions?
I hope we do win.
I hope so too.
I do want to thank the Lakota group for their hard work again. They came, they were here with a transition that was a challenging transition. There's no doubt about it and there was a loss of communication in some areas and some setbacks and especially in the area of time. I cannot express enough. I cannot express enough, and I would let Taylor do it if he didn't have a sore throat, but he may want to do it anyway. I would, I cannot express enough that this be advanced to the council so we can begin, begin executing the plan. Um, that, that's, that's critical because everything takes time. And the sooner we can hit the ground running, the better off we are. So uh, Mr. Chairman, we'd ask that this be advanced to the council for adoption.
If you haven't read it closely, I really encourage you to. It's, it sounds like a North Chicagoan is speaking. It's, it's really written nicely and thoughtfully. So please do it, even residents. It's really fun.
And we do recall you coming in, coming in and speaking to people and everything. So it's not like you left out anything.
Real quick.
I think you're asking, how do you get a copy?
Yes.
Um, so city council needs to adopt it and then it can be made public.
I thought the draft was uploaded.
We do have the draft.
Did you? Oh, okay. Is it on online?
Yes.
Okay. It's just a dra- a draft version, but it is incredibly, incredibly similar to what will be adopted.
Okay, oh.
Oh, also if I may, I also recall, because I got them in my, in my email. Um, although I don't often use QR codes. I know there were QR codes provided um in flyers um that went to, I believe.
Every house.
Every resident, every household. That to me would include if, if a I don't know if it went to a business. So if a business owner doesn't live in the city, they might not have gotten it. But um, there, there were, there were ample opportunities for, I'll say, everyone to give their opinion, you know, to, to give opinions, to give, to make suggestions, to say what they wanted to see. Um, and that's all of our uh citizens. So I, I recall that. I put it up on my Facebook. Um, again, I don't know how responsive. But, but it was, it was, it was made as available as, as possible.
If I'm being honest, during the transition to, we were, we were concerned about the loss of communication. So at some point, we were trying to reach out to you guys directly.
Yeah.
But at some point, we were like, we did it once and then we were like, maybe that's not the right thing to do. So we stopped. So it was just like, you know, like, we're not sure if we should and shouldn't, but we definitely tried.
I'd make it available to the public through Facebook, because I keep a Facebook page for.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and through the website, whatever, whatever means were available, just so people knew that, that they had an opportunity to weigh in. If they, if they chose.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Put that on. Okay, we're going to go to the next item. Discussion of extension request for the property located at fifteen oh one Elizabeth.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hey, everyone. This is Taylor Wageron. Um, sorry, I cannot be there tonight in person. Yes, as uh Chief of Staff, um, Jackson noted, I'm out sick. Um, especially on tonight, that really pains me uh with the comprehensive plan coming to council or committee rather. Um, so I'm happy for the discussion, um, but I just wanted to note that just I'm thrilled by this plan. I think they've put together an excellent product here. Um, the pairings part at the end of the plan is, is just so intuitive, uh, really builds um an opportunity for collaboration with different groups. Uh, so I'm excited. So just a quick note on that and uh thank you guys uh for consideration of that item. Um, I'll be brief though on this item here, uh fifteen oh one Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, we've got a request for an extension uh to the real estate agreement uh for this property. This was a property that was sold um to J and J Homes to construct a single family dwelling on the property. Um, the current agreement um stipulated as a condition that the home be uh built and then issued a certificate of occupancy by October twenty twenty-three. In June twenty twenty-three, J and J Homes did um did receive a building permit to construct the home and it is currently under construction um somewhere in the upper ninety percentile of uh finished with that project. So it's nearing the finish line here. Um, but just to uh dot the i's and cross the t's here, they are seeking an extension to the real estate agreement to allow for them to finish construction and then find a buyer for the property. So um they're almost at the finish line. Uh, they would like to seek, I believe it's an eighteen-month extension. Uh, just in case uh anything falls through with any uh sales that um conveyance of the property here to the end user. Um, but that's uh the quest on the table.
Are there any questions? All right, we're, we're going to put it on. Get it on, be voted on. Thank you, Taylor. We're going to go to the next item. The discussion of one-year service agreement extension with SafeBuild.
All right, um, this one is a uh, like it was said there, just a one-year extension to the existing agreement. Uh, this is a professional services agreement for inspection and plan review services uh within the Economic Community Development Department. Uh, SafeBuild has been doing these services for us uh for a number of years now, but if you recall, uh BNF Construction Code Services was also in the picture for some time. Um, essentially, there's two groups here, BNF and SafeBuild, that have almost been competing um for this kind of contract. There was an RFQ done uh in two thousand twenty-two uh soliciting um calls for qualifications. Um, for these services, the city opted to go with SafeBuild uh for an agreement. Um, while it still had a agreement with BNF for some plan review services. That's when um this agreement was uh first initiated with SafeBuild itself. That was a one-year agreement with SafeBuild and it was extended uh last year for a one-year term. And so we are seeking uh a one-year extension again. This would bring us to August of twenty twenty-five. The terms of the agreement, um, terms of the uh dollars and cents of it do not change. It would be the same rates.
Taylor, will we be using BNF steel or?
No, um, we terminated our agreement with BNF uh when we opted to go all in with SafeBuild. So SafeBuild now performs all plan review services and inspection services on behalf of uh the city.
Okay, any questions? None, okay. Put it on, Lori. We're going to go to the next item. Discussion of consideration of creating a RFP slash RFQ development of a city appearance code. Go right ahead, Chief of Staff.
Chairman, Chairman Evans, members of the council. Two to three weeks ago, uh I had the opportunity to walk uh Sheridan Road with uh Alderman Coleman and Alderman Smith to look at um appearance more than anything else. Um, we looked at appearance, we looked at trees, we looked at trash uh and how it was not being properly disposed of and opportunities for us to freshen the appearance of Sheridan Road. Question kept being raised by Alderman Coleman and Alderman Smith, can't we cite for this? What about this? How do we get this facade to look better? My rebuttal or my, my return to the, to the two aldermen were, we don't have an appearance code. If you want us to have the ability to enforce a set of standards, whether it be for facade, whether it be for curb appearance, whether it be for paint colors, I mean, there's just a variety of things and appearance code is the way to do it. It takes out subjectivity to some extent, even though the appearance code itself could be subjective. Um, what we're saying is we do not have the skill set to do that in-house. It just isn't in anybody's bailiwick. So the uh Alderman Smith had asked that this be brought before his committee tonight because he wasn't going to be here to ask that the council give consideration of having staff go out to do an RFP RFQ for qualifications, not to engage, but to bring back qualifications of a uh consultant or a consulting firm that would be able to do this and to identify the price and get a sense of what the finished product would be. There would be no cost for the RFQ or an RFP, no cost at all. What it is, is basically saying, who's out there to do it? What can you do for us and how much is it going to cost us? So if the committee's uh interested in seeing that move forward and the council's interested in seeing that move, move forward, then staff will create a document to put out for bid for consultants to take a look at the opportunity to potentially do this work for us. We would not be able at this time to do it in, in this fiscal year because there's not budgeted dollars for it. But it would give us a ready-made package and dollars to budget for the next fiscal year so we could execute the uh development of an appearance code.
Right, any questions? No, okay. We'll, we'll put it, we'll.
Should we move forward? Yeah, this doesn't have to go anywhere but the direction from council to go ahead and move it forward.
Move forward.
Very good.
Okay, at this time, I would like to close the Economic Development Plan and Zoning Committee meeting. So move, move by Alderman Allen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Murphy. Roll call.
Alexa.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Like to open up finance slash audit committee meeting, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, right, in the general. Anyone have any questions on discussion of monthly budget report? Okay, none. Okay, two, discussion of treasury report. Anybody have any questions on the June twenty twenty-four report? Okay, thank you. We're going number three. Discussion review of requests to waiver competition, competition bid and rebranding campaign. We need to talk about that one. Cause we talked about it, not rebranding, rebranding.
Thank you.
All right, uh, uh, thank you Chair and uh members of city council. Um, I came before you uh prior to this uh asking for we uh waiver of competitive bidding uh for a rebranding project. There were uh requests for more information and so I wanted to come before you tonight with more information about um rebranding and what a rebrand entails. Uh, there were some questions about that uh the last time. Uh, so I'd like to start with uh why uh we're rebranding. A, a rebrand serves to uh help stimulate growth and investment for businesses, community and tourism. Uh, it essentially uh signals that North Chicago is a great place to live, work and visit. From my office in, in particular, um, we've uh had a, a focus on events, uh Community Days, Fiestas Patrias Juneteenth, uh, we're all uh events that we recently had. Juneteenth and uh Fiestas Patrias, uh, if you aren't familiar, have had their um start in Waukegan and those events uh moved to North Chicago. Um, I, I personally uh started a Veterans Benefit Fair. Um, all of these things serve to bring people into North Chicago. It serves to raise the profile of North Chicago. Um, a rebranding project uh just kind of emphasizes these things. Uh, the second thing it does is differentiate, differentiate the city from nearby communities owning what's unique. What makes us different from other communities? Um, and, and it, it serves to kind of leave behind those comparisons uh when people say, oh, well, North Chicago, Waukegan and Zion, and they kind of lump us together. Um, it, it kind of moves to, to separate us from that. And it revives the uh existing brand perception. Uh, that, that perception of North Chicago uh that, that a lot of people have who have probably never been here uh and, and may not never, ne- never come here. Um, it revives uh a, a brand perception of um a community and a historical uh brand perception. Uh, it also insti- instills assists, a sense of pride and belonging within the community. We've seen that here where people come up and say, you know, there, there's, there's not enough good news coming out of the city, but there are good things going on here. We hear it all the time. We hear people say, there's a change coming in North Chicago. I can, I can feel the change coming in North Chicago. A rebranding is going to emphasize and, and uh compel others to see that change that uh is going on in North Chicago. Secondly, Studio North. This is the main reason why I'm here today is that to ask that a local business uh be chosen to um to do our, our rebranding. I, I'm, I'm here to advocate for local business, um, which is a jewel in North Chicago, a global marketing firm. Sixteen sixteen Green Bay Road, North Chicago, Illinois has been the home of Studio North for forty years. They're in the community, they're active in the community. Um, and they know the community. This is one of the important reasons besides the local business element of it. Um, having a, a vendor that knows the community and is active in the community, knows the people in the community. The people there are people in this community. You know, as I spoke about stimulating um commerce, they have a vested interest in us stimulating that interest. They are part of that commerce here in the city. And then that, that differentiation, they know what makes us different because they're a part of our community. Um, and it's still in a sense of pride, they're located here. Their name is Studio North. Our, our city is in their name. And so, you know, as far as, as pride in the city, I, I don't think that there's anything else that can be said about that. Um, their former clients have been uh the City of Lake Forest, Granger, CDW, Lenovo and Verizon. Last year, they won the Muse Awards twenty twenty-three Agency of the Year. That's global. They won the Agency of the Year. These are our neighbors in North Chicago. They won the B to B or they, they were finalists in the B to B Elevation Awards Agency of the Year. So this is two awards they received, Agency of the Year. Um, the next slide. They've done marketing for Community Days for the last two years. Um, you know, if you look at the marketing for Community Days, people always comment and they say, wow, man, this, this marketing looks really good. And that's because we have a partner that makes us look good and they want to continue to make us look good. They, they have a passion for our community. So I'd like to talk about the power of a brand. Branding gives meaning to abstract ideas. If you look at a logo versus brand, a brand proposition, you'll see what someone who's uninitiated would think of as, as three circles put together uh with Disney underneath it. But everyone knows because of the, the work that has gone into that brand, that their brand proposition is family fun. Now, that logo says nothing about family fun if you don't know anything about it. And so everything that goes into a brand to make that mean something is what we're talking about for North Chicago. Volvo, if you look at that, safety. Everything that goes into a brand and that logo created the brand proposition of safety. Okay, there's one more thing I'd like to talk about, uh, another city. Uh, the city of Dubai. Their brand proposition is wealth and world-class tourist destination. Now Dubai in nineteen sixty-three was a poor fishing city. In the nineties, they were rich in oil, but sought to create a world-class tourist destination. We could do the same thing. Uh, it, they created something because they decided we're going to rebrand. We're going to put a, a, a brand together that says wealth and, and we're going to build upon it. And that's what I'm asking for you to do. And the reason why I'm asking for our neighbors in Studio North to uh be allowed to prepare this for the city is because they know the city better than anyone else. So that's my presentation. I'm, I'm asking you to support a local business, a capable business to allow us to move North Chicago forward the way that we know that it can be. Thank you.
You sold me. You want to say no more?
Thank you, sir.
Way of competitive bidding, and you know, I focus on supporting your own business in your city. If you don't support your own, who gonna do it for you?
Right, sir.
That's one of my biggest pet peeves. Anybody can say that I speak for that. So I know some of the other Aldermen have talked about always get the three bids, but I want to hear what they have to say before we. I want to see what the I know, we asked the last few weeks, we, we, we talked about, we want to make sure you get three bids, but if I got any questions on this. I do. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. All right. I, I was, I was over the Zoom, so now I'm here in person. So I better explain myself. I'm with the Alderman. I want North Chicago businesses. I'm for Studio North. I love this presentation, right? I love the way that you and the chief, you came back, you came back with a strategy, you came back with a game plan. And I'm for any business, I, I would be Mr. North Chicago, right? I love our businesses. But, okay, here's the but, okay? I think that we should go out to bid and let everybody bid and then we just pick the North Chicago people anyway.
You can't, you can't do that. That's illegal.
No, 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 no. Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute, Megan. If you go out for a bid, the council has the rights to take into consideration any bid or anybody that they want. So if I bid and I'm from North Chicago and you got two bids from California, we as Aldermen can say, we get the bids, we don't have to take the highest amount or the lowest amount. We can take anybody we want, right?
With Aldermen, with all due respect, that's not true. That's illegal. You cannot locationally choose one bid over another once you've done a request for bids. So if you do go out for bids, you have to take the most responsible, responsive bid. And there's case law that states if you give preference to a local business over a non-local business, that you can be sued. So no, you're, you're, that, that premise is not correct. If you want to waive the bid because you like a local company, this is the way to do it.
Put on for bids, up and down, waive the bid.
I agree.
Okay. Done. Thank you. You can go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Alderman Jackson.
The week, the week of, has the price changed from last meeting?
No.
Same price?
Yes.
Okay, because it should be denoted on the.
Will you put that price on for next when we agree to vote? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please, yeah, please make sure that the dollar amount is on the.
You know, I am going to verify that later.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, no. Thank you, Alderman. Any more questions on this? I'll entertain, can I get a motion to close the signation? Can I get a second? Alderman Evans, can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Murphy. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Thank you. Finance slash Audit Committee meeting is closed. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to open up the committee of the whole. And can we get a roll call?
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, we have two items. Actually, the presenter for this is out. This is Alderman Smith. But he wanted to have a designation for two honorary road sign, one for Debbie, Deborah, Debbie Richards. And that's from Sherman Avenue between Martin Luther King Drive and Twenty-third Street. And then also for Glenn S. Johnson and that's on Twentieth Street and Twentieth Street and Lewis Avenue. So he's, he's looking to have two honorary signs placed. I think there do have to be a procedure though. He has to go out and get signatures and, and make sure that, you know, all these
Right.
are met. And I think, what is it, two per year?
Yes, two per year.
So they, so that's two in the same year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I'd have to go back in a little.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman.
Since the presenter of that isn't here, can we just table it until he gets back? Does anybody have a problem with that?
I know.
Okay.
Right. But I'll make sure that he, yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. Just an FYI, the streets are on the wrong designation honorary roadway. They're switched. So please, when we make that, please make sure we make that adjustment based on the submission of the paperwork.
Okay. Yeah, I will.
They're not correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Alderman.
I think the motion.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll just have it brought back up when the Alderman returns and to let him know that the streets need to be corrected. All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Been moved this second. That the committee of the whole standing adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman January.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Take care.
Yes, you too.